We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Kingsville City Commission Order at 6:00 PM, 90, July the 27th, 2015. All six, five, I was gonna add a member to the commission, all five commission members present. We generally open our meetings with pledges of allegiance and prayer.
Father, we ask that you be here with us throughout this meeting and daily and help guide us to do your will in all that we do and all that we say for the betterment of this community, the state, and the nation.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas A and M, by the pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state and God, one and indivisible. The next order of business is approve the minutes of the July 13 meeting.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Paney to approve the minutes as presented, segmented by Commissioner Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Mr. Stein.
Commissioner Paney?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
Yes. We're going to a public hearing. It is 6:02. This is a hearing for a special use permit for a wrecking or salvage yard currently zoned as 1L Light Industry located in Corral Block 2, Lot 23, also known as 1200 East Corral by Eric Kent, agent for Daniel Rosas owner. Okay. Tom, is this your, this is your, uh, this is a public hearing and if anyone wants to come up and speak about this particular subject, you have five minutes to talk about this subject. Tom, you wanna go ahead and give us kinda a lowdown on this?
Sure. As you, this is in the agenda item. Mr. Kent, too, and Mr. Rosas, who's the owner of the property, along with another gentleman, want to put a, an impound lot in this property. This is 1200 East Corral, between 16th and 17th. On the west of it is, I think, a welding shop, a camp shop. Right now, there is just a, like, a little outbuilding sitting out in front with the driveway. It does have a curway cut. Anyway, so they came forward. There was a little confusion as to how they wanted to utilize the property. The plan to zoning, we did have a conference call with Mr. Kent, too, and I do have in writing from the property owner that it will only be an impound lot. There will be no salvaging of parts on any vehicles that they bring to the lot. Take the wrecker, go to the accident or whatever, bring the car to the lot, store it there, and then it will be taken to wherever it has to go, Car Heaven or whatever. Either ordinance, there is a couple of the desires, special conditions. One is, obviously, it's the fencing. It will be completely enclosed by 100% site obscuring privacy fence to prevent the contents from being visible. Obviously, they have to get all the necessary permits. After that discussion, the plan to zoning commission voted 7-0 to approve the special use permit.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple. Okay. So, definitely, it's just an impound, what's wreckage, wreck cars, impound cars, not a salvage yard?
Correct.
And there will be landscaping?
Yes. He also, he had said he would do landscaping in the conference call at the plan to zoning.
Is this part of the ordinance anyway?
Right.
Those are my questions, Mayor.
Yes.
As far as the closure of fence material, does it have to be a specific material or?
Just side obscuring, so it doesn't have to be a specific. Stone or wood that, you know.
There's one further up on Corral, I believe, but.
That's a recycle, that's recycling.
Correct. Further, yeah, that's more recycling and salvaging.
Right.
And they, and all they have, their fence is just that chimp with the blue slats. This will, this will be bedroom and that.
Okay. Sure. On impound yards, you usually have vehicles that sit there for, I don't know, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. But there are possibilities where these cars can remain there for a few months and...
The applicants are here. Okay. The applicants are here. They told me that they think that 40...
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days. If you want them to answer that question for you, Commissioner.
Sure. But you come up, yeah, just introduce yourself and...
My name is Eric Kent, and I'm the owner of Lone Star Record Service. And the vehicles will stay there for 45 days. That's a max the state allows us to. After 45 days, the officer will come and pick up the vehicles. Most of them, the vehicles will be impounded vehicles from the Border Patrol. We have a contract with the US Border Patrol. And also, we're required to get on to the Rotation Ledge for Clever County Sheriff's Office, Kentville PD, and other law enforcement agencies.
How big, Chris, is it okay for me to ask questions now or do we need to wait till we have...
It would be preferable to wait till the ordinance comes up because it's just an introduction.
Okay. We'll have another minute to talk later, okay?
Awesome.
Thank you. Alright. But, anyone here that wants to speak about it, I'm gonna make, the owners won't have you guys up. And then, anybody else? Is a public hearing? Okay. I'm gonna close this public hearing at 6:07 and we'll go into reports from commission staff. What do you have, Jim?
Yes, sir. Our next regular meeting is in two weeks on August the 10th. The deadline for agenda items for that meeting as well as staff reports is this Friday, July the 31st. A reminder to staff that we will have a staff meeting this Wednesday, the 29th. The meeting is gonna be starting at 10:30 instead of our usual 11 o'clock because we're gonna be discussing the draft for the travel policy as well as our regular staff meeting items. And then we also got a call from Tech Dot today and they advised that their contractor will begin work on 14th Street tonight. And they are gonna start at Corral and 14th and work their way south. And that'll be a new overlay with some kind of novitship that Charlie is just very excited.
Moon Rocks?
Apparently a very nice product.
Okay. Sounds good. Tom, you just have for, you know...
No. No. Jennifer...
You wanna do a report then, Jim?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Jennifer's put a report together regarding abatements and demolitions. And this is information based on the past year, the past 12 months, from June of 2014 to June of 2015. While I can read it, obviously Jennifer will have any detailed answers for you, but in that period of time, the community appearance has mowed and/or cleared debris of 350 properties. Seventy of those have been addressed more than once. The total amount billed to customers, including administrative fees, is 77,100. And approximately 24% of that amount has been paid by the property owner. At this time, no liens have been reported. Really, the analysis of the abatements is, I think historically, is probably what to be expected. One wishes we would make or receive, probably is better, more funds for the work that we do, but it's just not the case. You know, many of the property owners don't live in Kingsville, so they just probably use the lien process or they just don't pay renters. So, but as you know, that we still need to do it. We wanna keep our neighborhoods safe and healthy and, just so you know, we have two operators who do mow that and city properties, too, like the, with Kingsville Monument signs on the bypass and the caboose, just as an example. They mow those when it was needed, so. Do you wanna add anything to that?
No. It's a rough estimate, of course. You know, a little bit of time has passed, so numbers are probably a little higher than that on properties that we've mowed, but it's an approximate on the numbers.
So, on the demolitions, that was the other category. And as you know, we have two types. We have voluntary demolitions and commission-approved demolitions. And it's important because the numbers really reflect which one we'd probably rather achieve. On the voluntary, we have, we've had 33 demolitions in the past 12 months, 11 commission-approved and 22 voluntary. Of the 22 voluntary, they've been demolished at a total cost of $53,000. Of that, of $53,000, almost 48% of that has either been paid or is in good standing with the payment plan. Which really goes to show that we, Jennifer really makes an effort, really makes an effort to enter into a voluntary demolition agreement. Obviously, from the numbers, our payment for the work that we do is much better. Corresponding commission-approved demolition, and as you know, I mean, that's the responsibility and those folks who reach that process, as you can know, aren't real happy. And so consequently, of the 11 that we demolished in the last 12 months, all of them, all the money has been placed on liens, all $23,764. Which, if you coincide that with the conflict that occurs, it probably shouldn't be too surprising, I guess. I think the summary of that is, one, the average cost per structure that we demolish is not quite $2,400. The total amount of 33 structures was $76,786. Obviously, the ones that we've been voluntary have gotten, been paid or gotten some money off of that. Obviously, the advantages for the voluntary demolitions, when the property owner works with Jennifer and they come to an agreement, obviously they have interest in taking care of their property and they wanna try to do the right thing. So consequently, you know, the time period is shorter, we can accomplish that faster, and then generally, those property owners do wanna pay because they do wanna do the right thing. So that's why Jennifer's working really hard in that process. And anytime that we can reduce the conflict that comes up here, we'll, we'll try to do that.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
You bet. Anything?
A couple things. First, thank you for putting this together. We have been talking about this, so appreciate it. Is there anything, have we talked about, maybe Courtney, this is part of your endeavors and everything, is there anything else we can do to encourage these people to pay what they owe? Do any of these properties have water? Because I know some places will pull the water if they don't pay bills that they're owed. Courtney, I promised Courtney that I wouldn't do this until we get the new city manager, but I know some of these people owe back taxes. And I really think it's time for us to start foreclosing, working on foreclosure on properties. Because especially, especially the ones that we're going back to, you know, we have landowners and they're gone, they're not gonna do anything, get them back on the tax rolls. But I did promise...
If they do meet the certain requirements that are in the tax clause in order to do such a foreclosure, then the commission within the last 12 months has contracted with the Landowner Firm to proceed with that.
I'd really like to keep that on the burner, maybe start. Really, it takes a couple of people where they, they have to pay or they do get foreclosed and then these landowners that are not around, somehow they hear about it. And, you know, unfortunately, that's what it takes sometimes. But thank you very much for putting this together, gives us a little insight.
Good job. You did a good job. Anybody else have anything?
Yes. On the agreements that are reached for paying the fees on the voluntary demos, either way, is there interest connected to that?
Not on the, not on the demos. Well, once the lien is placed, yes.
Is?
Once the lien is placed. Statutorily, we're allowed to charge interest once the lien is placed.
And what's the interest rate there?
I would have to check the state statute. I wanna say it was like 7% to 8%.
Sounds about right. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Sure. Just, I don't know if it's a hypothetical, but you know how we've had an impact on materials from, not just from different sources, but the demolition part of it in our landfill? Can we put a percentage as to what impact the demolition process is in terms of the whole, the whole puzzle that goes into, into the landfill?
I think, in a conversation that I've had with the city engineer, a mace myth, they do that, don't they, Courtney? Does a mace myth engineer do a lot of the landfill? I think they have. I don't have that memory.
I'm just curious.
But I think mace myth can...
We can only charge what the statute allows, which generally is the actual cost for the demolition and the disposal and then the interest for unpaid.
Yeah. And my, I mean, my concern is the landfill in terms of how we're, we're filling it and how we've got issues with the landfill.
Yeah, the tonnage going in.
Because the permit's still, they're still working on a permit to expand it. I mean, I believe, I know I've talked to them, I believe they're still, you can separate what's called C and D, which is construction and debris, into another area. And there, for a while, it was separated. Your garbage went in one place, it had to be covered every day, and your C and D could be put in another area that didn't have to be covered, but once, and I'm not sure on the permit, which area, maybe Bill does, which area they're working on for the landfill.
We're working on type one.
Going too far off mark here, Courtney?
It is just the presentation item, so it's starting to get stretched, but with regard to that, like I said, we can only do what the statute allows. Okay. We're getting back to retrocharge.
Okay. Anything else?
Bill has it. He might answer the next question.
Okay. We're repeating that.
For Commissioner Luber's question, we do have a type four and a type one. The type four is to capacity, so we're only going into the type one section.
Okay. So all the construction and debris is going into the type one now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Which one, which permit are they working on? Both or you're saying the type one?
The whole amendment, yes, ma'am, type one.
Okay.
Okay. Type one into the type four.
Anything else? I just briefly, I, Jennifer, I know you do a great job, of course, I tell you, that code enforcement department has really grown and done an excellent job helping us clean up Kingsville. And, you know, it's great that we have these numbers, but again, then it's unfortunate that we do. And so it's, it's kinda double-edged sword. A couple things, and just curious more than, so don't take this the wrong way. Where are we on hospital? Are we, I mean, we've kinda dropped that thing and I don't know if we can pick it back up. I don't know if that's a, it's gonna take some grants, I would imagine.
Yeah.
And are we looking to maybe do something in that area?
I attended a Brownfield workshop last week, and I think there's an opportunity there in Brownfields.
Well, if we have an opportunity, let's, let's take advantage. I would urge you to do so.
Okay.
I think by our conversation, you already are.
Yeah. Yeah. I just don't want you to have to have that.
All right. Second, and I talked, I talked to the city manager this morning about it, but just because we're here. You know, I actually read that staff report. And we used to do the 10 worst properties of them. I don't see that anymore. And I think that's a good program that we have. I like that. Because I think it's citizens that are living here interested in cleaning up their properties. I don't know if there was other members of the commission that said they didn't like it or what. I just noticed it's not there anymore. Again, just curiosity.
Sure. Sure. And I think we went in some other areas like the houses that don't have siding and parking lots and...
Fine, good, you can do that, too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Thank you for the report. Thank you, Jennifer. Courtney, have anything else?
I'm not sure if the engineering students are gonna do their presentation tonight or...
We got a bunch of them here. Anybody wanna get out and present anything about the railroad safety? Okay.
We're gonna text late this afternoon and they might be needing to reschedule that to the next meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
Thought basis, I don't know what else.
All right. Anything, anything else? I noticed that, Courtney, that we got our tax property evaluation. These numbers are tentative.
Those are the numbers that we just received today. I believe I had seen an agenda from the district that they still had some items that were being contested, so the appraisal review board process will be ongoing.
Okay. What, the legislature did something to add the lawn taxes and I'm not so sure that's their, their great tax break. You know, put it, strapped it on the local government as opposed to, maybe a sales tax that would affect them. How's that gonna, how's that gonna affect these numbers? And that's maybe not fair to you, but I maybe wanna do some kind of...
Ask out the tickets and that.
When we get all the numbers together, let's look and, I guess that'll come up later on how that's gonna play out. Anything else? If not, we'll go on to public comments on or off the agenda. It's an opportunity for anyone to come up, say anything they want to. You have three minutes to talk about anything you want to visit about. Tell us who you are and where you live.
Yeah, my name is Kent Stars. I work for the city of Kingsville. I'm here with my wife Karen. We started a journey two and a half years ago when our house burned down and Karen almost lost her life. We've been on that journey now for two and a half years and turned out to be major successful because Karen's here tonight and we're very happy for them both. But we were trying to figure out a way to thank all the people that helped us along the way. So what we did is we made a coin of a picture of when Karen was first recovering. And we got that from our daughter and we put it into a coin, a little thank you to her. And basically, we were helped by so many people, by so many groups, we can't even name them all. But no group is more important than the group in front of me here, the employees behind me, and the citizens of this city that helped us get to where we are today. And we just wanted to present you, the mayor, with a plaque honoring us.
Sure.
Just for the record, the plaque reads, "Our lives changed for, to the city of Kingsville, our lives changed forever on January 21st, 2013. A fire consumed our home and left Karen severely burning. She was given a 2% chance of survival. Your courage, love, prayers, and unending support made Karen's miracle recovery possible, and we are extremely grateful. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the answer. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. You gotta tell us who you are and where you live.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lance Ham. I live at 912 South Creek here in Kingsville, Texas. I'm here tonight to mainly talk about two things related, of course, the highway safety at US 77 and the Farm Road 1717 intersection. I already got three minutes, so I have no bluff. I gotta get right to the point. The two things that I really wanna talk about is, first, I would respectfully request the commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Kingsville to submit a resolution to Tech Dot asking for a speed limit reduction, a mandatory speed limit reduction to 55 miles an hour. Right now, the emails that I've received from Tech Dot, they're gonna do rumble strips, flashing lights, intersection heads, signs, and a plaque that says 55 miles an hour, but it's only advisory. I don't think that's good enough. I think we actually need a mandatory speed limit reduction to 55, something that we can enforce. So I respectfully request that Tech, or that the commissioners do that resolution and submit it as soon as possible to get it on the books at Tech Dot. Because if Tech Dot doesn't have it on the books, personally, I don't think they look much at anything. The second thing has to go to the enforcement. I talked to Terry Pence today. He's the traffic safety guru up at Tech Dot. He gave me the name to Stephanie Christina. She works over at Tech Dot in Corpus. She's in charge of the STEP grants, this is the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grants. So the city can ask for a grant from Tech Dot, and this intersection is perfect because we know that there's been five fatalities, dozens and dozens of crashes out there. And Mr. Pence said that this is a perfect place where a grant, that's what it's designed for, is for overtime enforcement of our law enforcement, to get out there and really enforce it. The traffic study that was done, completed a couple weeks ago, said that the southbound traffic at that intersection is going 75 miles an hour. The northbound traffic is going 71, and that's based on the 85 percentile rule. And that means that 15% of the drivers out there are going above that 75 miles an hour. 15%. So for me, I think law enforcement can at least nail ticket those 15% that's going over 10 miles an hour. And if we can get law enforcement to get that speed down to 65 miles an hour, then Tech Dot can legally by their 85 percentile rule lower it to 55. They're not gonna do that right off the hand, and that's why I really, I think the citizens really need the commission to sign that resolution and get it out there so we have something in the books. Because as the mayor and I talked earlier today, you know, a lawsuit might be coming soon and Tech Dot's gonna be number one on the list, and hopefully the city is at number two. So thank you for your time and hopefully we can get something done.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going into our consent agenda.
A motion and we approve.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Paney to approve the consent agenda presented, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Paney?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
Yes. Going to our regular agenda, the first item is consent, an introduction of an ordinance meant to be zoning, ordinance by county, a special use permit for 1200 East Corral Avenue for automobile storage, impound lot. Okay. We can visit. Why don't you come on up, Eric?
This one.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or would you come to?
I have just one. And I, I know I saw it here somewhere, but what's the size of your lot?
I believe it's about an acre, about 90 by 200. Perfect. I picked that.
90 by 200, I think.
Okay. I was just curious on, I saw the square, but it didn't have the dimensions.
Yes, ma'am. And we will landscape it and tune it up and everything else, so it will, it will look nice. We're lucky to employ about 10 personnel here in Kingsville. We have about $300,000 of equipment, of trucks and stuff like that, so I think it should be a big plus for Kingsville. I know they have a lot of issues with the companies here right now of responding to Kingsville PD calls. Talked to some couple of officers and, you know, they really don't like calling tow trucks because it takes 45 minutes and it shouldn't take 45 minutes to get anywhere in Kingsville. So, thank you.
Are you leasing from Mr. Rosas or is he part of the business?
No, we're trying to buy the property, but he's not ready to sell, so we're leasing the property. Personally, there's nothing else we can find in the city, so we're leasing the property for a...
How's that going to, what do you, Tom, how's that going to work with?
No, he's going to put up a cedar picket, the cedar fence, the slats, you know, overlap so you can't see through.
Okay. Got you. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Is this property located right next to the city yard?
No.
Further what? Further down.
Yeah, further down.
You know where the load shop is? Up there?
Property right next to it.
It'd be right there.
Yes, right next to it. It's about a few blocks away from, if I'm not mistaken, forever coming in from that. I believe it's down that street.
Well, that's a, that is a entryway to the city, and we let those guys that have the, the recyclers, we let them off the hook, go down, we get to have it.
I can reassure you, the property will look nice. Myself, I'm a really picky person, and if you look too much at the city and Corpus Christi, it's nice and neat, it's not like a junkyard. You know, if the vehicles windshield's broken, we're going to put tape over it, we're going to secure it. You know, it's, it's going to be clean and neat, no tall grass or anything like that. It's going to be, it's going to be clean and fine, maybe even better than the sheriff's office, hopefully. So, because I, I wouldn't buy that, the grass is about.
Grass is pretty discreet. We don't want to go there.
But it will be, it will be clean and cut and everything else.
Okay, sure.
You're, you're going to need a portable building of some sort, right?
Correct. There is a portable building that already has a restroom and, and stuff like that, so we're going to fix that opening up.
You realize how this works? There's two, there's an introduction, and then we have to.
Yes, sir.
Have another hearing on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Thank you. You live, you, you have one in Corpus, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Well, I can key so. Okay, next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget to cover unanticipated departmental group development insurance costs. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, commissioners, the budget amendment that we've got before you is to cover additional healthcare costs and how that arises is our open enrollment was held out for the budget was adopted. So when we have employees that come in and they select different type of coverages, then for everybody that goes from like an employee only to some other type of coverage, that's a $6,000 hit for each one of those. So as we lose people and get different people on, their health coverage is going to change, and so that's why we kind of end up with a difference at the end of the year. And these line items can't be covered with any other funds within their budget. That's why we're asking for a budget amendment for these, these items.
Any questions? Okay, this is an introduction item, but if anybody has anything that comes up, we'll have it in our next meeting. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget to cover excess audit fees.
The audit fees have been, the difference between what we budget according to the engagement on it that we get, according to what we get billed at the end, has been decreasing every year, so as we get things more caught up and everything, those audit fees are coming down every year, so next year, hopefully, we won't have to ask for additional funds at the end of the year. But again, it comes out of our budget, and we don't have enough money in our line items to cover the difference.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? If not, this is, at the end of introduction item, we'll bring it back up in the next meeting. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget to cover increased cash management fees.
This was kind of due to a change in the provider that moved communication with the police department, and so there was some additional charges that we had to incur due to this change and getting everything ready to go for the new city hall. So again, these are line items that, you know, that cannot be absorbed by any other line item within the police department's budget.
Any questions? Again, this is an introduction item. If something comes up, we'll have this in our next meeting. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget to cover additional cash management for the fire department.
This is for what we talked about at the last meeting, the additional $10,000 that we can apply for and our $1,000 cash match.
Anybody have any questions on this? Again, if something comes up, you can address it at the next meeting. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget for parks, parks and recreational programs. We already talked about this, too. Anybody have any questions on this? If not, this is an introduction item, we can bring it up in our next meeting. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended fiscal year 2014, 2015 general fund budget for the Quaker County Airport grant. Next match, we know what that is, so if anybody has any questions about that, if something comes up between now and then, you can bring it up at the next meeting, we have commentary on this. Next item is consider approval of resolution authorized by the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement for E-9-1-1 Public Safety and Training Performance Service between the city of Kingsville and those who've been council of governments.
Yes, sir. The Commission on State Emergency Communications has a requirement that began in 2009 that a new interlocal agreement be executed between the local COG and participating local agency. In our case, it'd be the Coastal Bend Council of Governments here with the city, and the interlocal has to be renewed every two years. We first started this in October 26th of 2009, and we renewed on August 22nd of 2011, and again on July 22nd in 2013, and so it's time again to do the two-year renewal.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Seven.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fany?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
Yes. Next item is consider approval of a resolution authorized by the city manager to enter into a cooperative purchase agreement for the city of Kingsville on Western States Contracting Alliance for allowable purchases, including but not limited to participating in addendums for base communication products and services.
Mayor, commissioners, as you all well know, we are members of the WISC, the Western States Contracting Alliance, and as previously approved by the city commission, this is who are buying our phone system through the cooperative group that we're purchasing the phone system through. And what is, this is kind of a housekeeping thing that allows us to contract through them with the actual vendor. We've done this before when we developed the AutoZone contract, which also went through WISC. So it's really just a housekeeping contractual thing. We've already approved the purchase, so there we are.
Okay, any questions?
Make a motion and we approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Luber to approve this resolution, seconded by both Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Beckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Fany?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
And if we consider, because we do 14 next, because it's actually related to 12. Sure. Anybody have any problem with that? Consider authorized wireless network installation project to enhance security and reliability of the city's network infrastructure.
As we have discussed several times about the addition of wireless network, Mr. Maggers, it's quite similar to the one we discussed several years ago about doing a citywide, but this one will be not entire citywide, but city building to city building. So part of this is, this is a budgeted item included in the city hall expansion. There are actually two contracts, two separate POs for this, one to Aruba Wireless Hardware, which partially goes under DIR, and some of it's to CDW, and part of that will be under a WISC contract as well. The two purchase orders, one is $44,639.52, and the other is for $111,275.49, and this will include basically going up on top of the water tower and doing much like Hattler Rivera is doing citywide, but just to city buildings.
Okay. Any questions?
Make a motion and we approve.
Second, there's a motion made by Commissioner Luber to approve the installation or approve this project, second by Commissioner Beckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fany?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
Yes.
Next item is consider approval of the resolution authorized by the city manager to enter into a interlocal participation agreement for the goodbye purchasing cooperative.
The goodbye purchasing cooperation is actually operated by the service center in Corpus Christi, ESC2, and they want us to be part of their purchasing cooperative. I feel that it's a good thing because it will help us tap in to provide positively some more local or Corpus Christi area sources. ESC2, of course, covers more or less the same counties as the COG does. It's not exactly the same footprint. At this time, there are no financial obligations to it. It's just another cooperative purchasing alliance that we can be members of.
Sure. Question?
Is there an advantage to this?
Being involved in several cooperative purchasing agencies is always good. Quite possibly what I'm looking at for this one is paper, or regular copy paper. As you all well know, schools go through great amounts of copy paper, you know, have to analyze their contract and paper quality, but I know that they have an excellent paper contract for regular stock copied paper. So we could be looking at them specifically, although at this particular time, there's not a particular product that we're wishing to buy specifically from this cooperative agreement.
So it'll be a pick and choose?
Yes, sir, it's a pick and choose. Any other questions? Is there?
Make a motion and we approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Fany to approve this resolution, seconded by Commissioner Beckles. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Fany?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pugh?
Yes.
Yes. But that's all of this, we got a city map on our turn.